And thank you to Corey McCarthy for being here for us and for Bill Hill from Temple Star. Thank you. All right, so we are going to call this meeting to orders in a special meeting of council the seventeenth day of November two thousand twenty. Is are there any other adoption addition to the agenda?
You can add a special meeting.
Yeah, but this is why I was wondering, why do you have that here?
It's our agenda.
Is it?
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. We don't have a delegation, so we have no minutes. The only object of this meeting is the budget two thousand twenty-one. So Jeff, maybe I'll turn it to you since you have given us pile of documents here.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming to a special meeting. My hope is, I don't think we actually have to be particularly long today. My hope was if we had a meeting with just a focus on budget, even if it's just for a little over an hour, we can make some headway on how we and then and then we can be a little more comfortable being done by the end of the year because I was starting to get a bit nervous, as I mentioned to you last time about preparing an interim budget, not sure how we're going to pull this together. So administratively, we've been working quite a bit on on preparing this since last week. What you have in front, you have three documents in front of you. You have the the standard budget document you're used to. You have an updated reserves listing. And what I mean by update is it's not actually, it's not an official reserves listing. We tried to estimate as best we could what each account would look like at the end of two thousand twenty. So you always have a one-year-old reserve listing because you have to look at it once we do year-end of the audit for the previous year. So we've done one where what we think it will look like at the end of the year because we know we're going to be talking a lot about use of reserves and we thought that'd be a little easier. And then you have the the standard five-year capital budget document as well. What I'd like to do is really, the first part of this, we'll just start on this eleven by seventeen. Now, a couple of things, and I did write a couple notes for myself here. We hit it, we hit a point administratively where in hearing back from some of you and even at the from the council meetings before is one of the challenges we have with this budget is we're trying to accommodate a very large capital piece, which will have corresponding operational implications, but those numbers aren't quite known yet. So we're still working through them. And the question that you've you've given to us administratively that we haven't been able to answer yet is what does that look like on two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and so on budgets? How does it impact those budgets? Which is an interesting question and a difficult one because we don't have all the numbers sorted yet. And so we're working with some elusive numbers still. So what we did, and it's something that we talked about two meetings ago, is the budget that you have in front of you is now balanced for the duration. So the three-year operating and five-year capital is a balanced budget. But, and this is the big caveat, it doesn't contain anything related to the rec facility. And the reason we did that is now as we explore the options for funding, it will become obvious what the ramifications down the road are. So if you decide tonight, and maybe you don't decide today, I'm all used to council meetings being a night, if you decide today that you want to go a certain direction for proposed funding, it's much easier for us to have a benchmark to show you how that affects the subsequent years. Okay? So I fully recognize we're going to throw it out of balance by decisions made on the rec facility. I get that. But we didn't know how we could show you how that looked unless we had a benchmark. And so I will also acknowledge upfront that when we get into, when we get into years twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, the capital portion of that, while we have some values in there that are balanced, it is, it's still going to need some tweaking. Brandon's working on those further years on the infrastructure master plan. He's trying to get that really nailed down. So we input what we've done over the year. We look at how that affects the rest of it and we prioritize. The way we were able to balance some of the capital, we'll get into it specifically, but we deferred some of the projects down the road. And then, but what you have is a benchmark to which we can start to have discussion on some of these big tickets and see how they're going to change things a week from now when we come back. So we can have some discussion today and then next week we can show you that, okay, if we go down this route, we, this is what we had to do to make it happen. Here's how it affected this year and this year and so on. So I'm hopeful that that's, that that's a beneficial exercise for us all. We just got back to that same spot where until we balanced the core budget, we didn't know how to really, well, it gives you a chance to see what you have to work with as well. So it puts everything pretty clearly. So that's why we chose that route and then, but you're still, you're still three meetings away from having to adopt anything. So we've still got lots of time to to work on it.
Do you have any question? I have not looked at it closely since we just got it, but you would know. What you're trying to say then, if I understand you, is those are balanced without one point five million dollar for capital expenditure or just a one million dollar for the rec center?
Correct, just the one million. So the five hundred thousand for the clubhouse is in there, but it's funded from reserves and then anticipated surplus for this year. So we weren't scratching very hard to find funding for that.
The reserve, you're talking golf course reserves?
Yeah, we had a golf course reserve and then we think we can make up the difference now. Time will tell at mill rate, right? When year-end comes, that's, that's when we'll actually know when all the bills are in for the year, but we think we can fund that. I'm going to say again, I know you're getting tired of hearing me say it, but after hearing from you after some of the meetings, I need to say it again. All of this is at your discretion. You have full discretion to use and manipulate every fund on this sheet as you see fit. I will caution you where I see there's a need for caution administratively. But at the end of the day, it's all on you to determine how this is going to go and how it will be spent. And that's the same with the reserves when we talk about those. We have a good amount in reserves for allocated purposes. You can use it for whatever you think is a priority of the community at the time. So what I'd like to do to kick this off is to go through this document. There's a surprisingly few amount of changes that we have to go through from what you've seen before. And then we can start to focus. I've done, as you remember, last meeting, you wanted to look at a scenario for funding of the of the one million dollars. It included some, some reductions or deferrals, some cancellations of referrals, some MSI and use of reserves. So I have that scenario for you as well that I'll give out. And then we can start to talk about how that fits in, if that's agreeable to to all of you.
Are we okay with that?
I have one quick question.
Please go ahead, councillor.
When, when we were talking about the golf course, there was supposedly a packet in there of fundraising. Is that over and above this figure?
Correct.
Okay.
So I've met with Mr. Beazer. They have some preliminary ideas, very preliminary. Nobody's suggesting it's at that point. They're estimating a cost of about three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot or roughly a million dollars for the facility. And so the intent here is the town would have half of that and they would have to come up with the other half, which again, the association is, seems to be very comfortable with.
Okay.
They seem to be very comfortable with that responsibility. So we've only accounted for half.
So this would be very similar to the rec center as well. We're putting in this much, whatever else they raise above that, we don't add any more to it.
Correct. Your, your contribution is capped, if you would.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right. So on both projects, and we'll get into this a little more later, the, the risk for the town here is, is that those projects come in at the dollar, they were projected. And if they don't, who's picking up the difference? That's still one thing we have to grapple with a little bit and we have to figure out how to mitigate that risk. But that's, that's a discussion, so potentially a little.
Councillor Drew.
So the other piece is that for the golf course clubhouse, if they don't fundraise...
There's no.
They don't get clubhouse. Then we build a half a million dollar clubhouse.
Or if we don't get funding, if we don't get funding for a rec center on their end, then, yeah, okay.
The same difference.
We still have to.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, at some point, you as a council are going to have to make a resolution and we're going to have to set that up that by resolution, the projects go, right? Because you have the requisite commitments on the other side of the table and you're comfortable with that. So you've got to be comfortable with the total price. You have to be comfortable with how we're administering the construction, which is a big issue we know we have to work through still as well. And then you've got to be comfortable that, that all the money's in place from the other side of the table, for sure.
Commissioner Brown, did you have a question? No, okay.
All right. Okay, well, the big eleven by seventeen. Here we go again. And I did ask for my staff, some of my staff to be here today, just if there's questions about ramifications of changing something or moving something or just those kind of things. Plus, it's good, they don't get to a lot of the council meetings and it's good to have some context when we do those three working hours. So I asked some of them to attend as well. What you will see today is in, I don't know what color you want to call that. Hawken and I settled on periwinkle. The purple color is what we settled on are the changes for today. The green is what you saw last meeting. And so the first one's going to show you how we brought the budget into balance is in two thousand twenty-one, we were, Hawken was examining the regulations around the most grant. And they are allowing you, if you have additional tax receivables on your books at March thirty-first, you can claim that difference from the most grant, not to displace collecting it, but because they're trying to keep us cash flowing.
Okay.
So they're saying if you received, in our case, we're, we're projecting having about seventy thousand dollars in taxes receivable on March thirty-first. So what the most grant is saying, the intent of this is to help you cash flow, so use the most grant to, for any outstanding receivables. So we were able to plug seventy thousand dollars income into the, in, without a requisite expense, which we were sixty-four thousand dollars short when we left the meeting two weeks ago. So that was actually a nice, quick fix for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so it's a grant we will not have, even when we collect that money, have to repay it?
Correct. That was our concern was that, was it only, because again, there's, there's no such thing as uncollectible debt in the municipality.
Right.
We, we have these really, well, we can take your house, we can put your house for sale, which heaven forbid, I, you never want to do, but you, there's no such thing as uncollectible debt in the municipality, but they're focusing on municipal cash flows and making sure you're still cash flowing if that wasn't an ordinance to mount in any given year. So we think we can capitalize on using that for that purpose and then we're looking for uses for that grant. So we think that's positive.
Perfect. Thanks.
So that was the one change on page one. Sorry, this goes side to side. The next, oh yeah, I'm looking at note at green, but at the, at the blue, on page three. Let me remove my microphone. Page three, as most of you, if you remember the previous years, these are going to change a little bit the next couple of meetings as well. We have Kevin Phillips working on our distribution and transmission obligations and revenues. And so he's given us his first estimate. And then we always have regulation change coming at the end of the year. We have the distributors and transmitters usually get fee increase approvals that we then have to try and compensate for. So this is as crystal, we've crystalballed it as well as we can at this stage. And so we, we changed a few things from Kevin. Page four. This one is just kind of eternal frustration, but we can't, there's no way around it. Our W C premiums are expected to go up twenty-six thousand dollars next year. It was not that many years ago. We were paying eighteen thousand dollars a year, just as an aside, just even a few years back, and we're up to sixty-six. And so those are, those are escalating quite quickly on us, but we just got that in this week, that notice for next year.
Which is the account?
Two, one, two, one, eight.
Okay, yeah, I see it, thanks.
So we just had to offset that a little bit. The, the next one down, ProComs is super small. We just, we have their, their invoices for, for the year, so that's fine.
Jeff, on, on that workman's compensation?
Yep.
When does that ever go down? Or does it?
You have residual, you have, what's the right way to put this? And Jill or Hawken, correct me if I'm wrong. Any, any claims you have against your account are residual for five years. So until you start having those kind of gaps of time without a claim against your premium, against your policy, then you, you have some high.
So we've had a few claims in the last couple of years?
We've, our last one was... Did it end, yeah, two years ago? Yeah, so we had a couple of years ago. It feels longer than that actually, but, yeah, maybe three years ago was our last one. It was significant and so that all factors into it. And so you have this kind of five-year rolling average against your, your policy. And we, we have a high, so we're an interesting organization because of the variety of the tasks we do. If we were just the office, our premium would be super low. We happen to have linemen who do live wire work. We have public works that work in ditches and on heavy machinery and it just, we're a very interesting organization from a liability insurance point of view.
So have they given you a justification for that giant jump from twenty to twenty-one?
Yeah, we get a full workup of, of here's what your premium percentage increases for this year, this year, and everything like that. It's really based, well, there's general inflationary increases anyway, and then it's based on these claims on this rolling average.
They're talking a twenty-five thousand dollar jump.
I hear you, councillor. If it wasn't a regulated thing, I'd try and push back, but I, I don't know that you get anywhere there with W C B. It's mandatory and it's one of those darn things.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-six thousand bucks is a big hit.
In one year. And, and again, without a claim in that year.
Yeah.
We didn't have a claim last year, this year. Again, when I talk about budget, on my mind, it was at twenty twenty-one already, but we didn't have a claim.
It was probably two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, probably. Yeah. The next is on page six and it's really just a removal. We, we had put under Alberta Disaster General, two, two, four, two, three, zero. You might remember, we had put all of the most funding in that account just to put it somewhere. And we're going to attempt to use a lot of it in this calendar year. And so when we get to the end of the year, we'll put the difference in there when we know what that looks like. We just, we just took it out except for the tax arrears part at this point. It was a wash. We just had it in. We had all the revenue and all the expense in the same year, so it was just a wash for us.
We got all that money from the disaster?
We don't, yeah, we haven't reconciled it yet. We're still waiting for some invoices to come in.
The job is done now.
Job is done. And we told them the nineteenth of November, we'd be completed work. We were ahead of that by a couple of weeks. And so we're just waiting for all the invoices. Otherwise... And again, as always, stop me at any account here. I'm just looking at what changed since we talked on the floor for the third. If you go to page ten, and this is where I mentioned about, we tried to balance this without rec facility considerations, and this is one of those accounts we tweaked to do that, and then we'll move forward with those considerations. So two, seven, two, zero, one, one. We had some wage in there for, I think, a quarter of two thousand twenty-one and then a full twenty-two, twenty-three. So we, we took those out again just to, to be at a benchmark level for tonight, today, and then we'll, we'll build from there. And then if you go to page twelve, it's really the same, two, seven, two, five, one, two. We created a general ledger for rec facility operating expenses. We just removed that out for now with flagging it as removed for discussion purposes. And then down the page, this came up from something earlier in the first, on the November fourth iteration of the budget, and I think Councilor Corb brought this up. We had had a, we had had a loan for the other five hundred thousand dollars of the clubhouse to get to a million. So since we formalized our agreement with the association, but the fundraising association, and they seem quite confident that they'll be the ones bringing the rest to the table, we pulled that out as, as an expense there. Same thing on page thirteen, two, seven, two, eight, three, zero. We had had some loan proceeds plugged in for the indoor rec facility in a previous budget. We just pulled those out for, for discussion purposes until we figure out how that will be financed. But below that on page thirteen is just more of the expense side of the electrical distribution system. So along with Kevin giving us forecasts on the revenue, we have some forecasts on the expense. So those are plugged in there. And those are anticipated to go up quite a bit on the distribution access tariff. Our costs are expected to increase due to regulatory approvals for the distributors and transmitters. So we're just takers of their price, right? So he tries to, it's a, I don't want to get into this too much. I think we've discussed it before, but we, Fortis can apply quarterly for changes to the rates on transmission and Altolink the same. They can apply quarterly and we do our budget once a year. And so Kevin tries to guess what those things will look at every quarter throughout the year and then find a bit of a happy medium where we can set our rate that we won't be caught substantially short of revenue at the end of the year or with a substantial surplus. And it's one of the reasons we have a distribution access tariff reserve account is because if we come in short, we draw from that instead of putting a rider on every individual bill. Because we were doing that for a few years. We had one year where we had substantial rider and then we turned around and gave everybody a, a credit rider the next year. And so we decided anytime there was excess, we would reserve it and use it to buffer the changes in the, in the account.
Commissioner Gold.
So this is a guess at what they're going to charge us for electricity coming into town?
Correct, yeah, correct.
Councillor Stiles.
So Jeff, I know that we've made overtures towards the provincial government and our desire to generate our own electricity. Perhaps we should invite our M L A to a council meeting soon so we can ask him to lobby on our behalf to continue that.
I'd, I'd love that, councillor. I've recently sent another email to the M L A and to his office because last year, when the mayor and I met with the Department of Energy, we were told in three weeks we'd have a response and we haven't heard a word from anybody since. And I have called, I've emailed, and we've been soundly ignored. So I've been routing all that through the M L A's office and haven't heard anything yet either.
Commissioner Bengri.
Jeff, as we look at this budget, projected budget, we're projecting almost two percent every year?
So we have a two percent tax revenue increase in every year for the, to start this, yes. Again, fully at your discretion, that's just how we built it to balance it.
Commissioner.
And we are using excess funds from the electric department to offset some of this distribution tariff, are we not?
So we, I think no is the answer to your question, but let me explain. So the distribution access tariff, well, no, I should take that back. We get a wholesale bill once a month, a hundred, well, eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars a month from Fortis. And then we set our rate to each user in town based on that. And so we recover it through the rate structure and we also have a margin on it which funds our electrical department.
But no, no excess money is coming from the electric department to offset some of this?
So there is excess funds from the electrical department, yes. We don't assign it specifically to that, but it is a part of the revenue structure in the, in the budget.
All right.
Correct.
So it goes into general revenues?
Yeah, if you took all those revenue accounts of distribution and transmission, there is an excess over and above those charges.
Okay, so it goes into general revenues, gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We're just finishing operations, page fourteen.
Before you go there on thirteen, I was, I'm just trying to look here at the requisition for the, for the library. Have you got a copy of that for this year's cup, upcoming budget? Because we had a meeting last night and I was, I should have brought it. I never thought about it, but I had the, the draft budget, but I thought the draft budget that they had for next year was the same amount as they had for this year. And, and so there might be a little bit of money there.
We haven't seen anything from them. Have we, Hawken, your way? From library requisition, I don't have to send us anything this year. No, so that would be news to us, councillor, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, just, just watch for it and, and let me know.
Good.
And if I, if I, when I get home tonight, I'll look at it and then I'll see and then I can let us know for next week.
Okay.
Commissioner Brown, can I just ask you a question? Did you approve the budget for the library yesterday?
A draft budget, yeah, yeah, we did.
But it's not approved yet?
No, just in principle.
Okay, all right, thanks. Commissioner Brown, you had a question? No?
Still no.
Twice I see your head. Yes, it's about it.
Page fourteen ends the operational side of the budget. As you know, the very last line, a major utility capital reserves, if we look at two thousand twenty-one, this budget currently contains a hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and forty dollars of taxation or other revenues, cumulative revenues to support the major utility capital reserves. That's always the account we tend to flex.
What number are you on?
Two, nine, four, seven, six, two, the very last line on operations.
Thank you.
That's always our account. We flex a number of times to get to the last, get right to zero.
Yeah.
Anticipate that changing. We have three more meetings, likely three more times, because if we got to find two thousand here or five thousand there, or we have three thousand left over, we, we set it there for the time being. So then it goes to capital and we can, let's just stay in this document for now. We can go to the other one, but we'll, we'll just stay here for now. Let me see if I want to do that. Yeah, that'll be fine, that'll be fine. So in capital, this is the sources of capital funding. Again, as we're, as we're trying to balance things, we're changing M S I allocations, we're changing what we're taking from some of those. So these have just changed a little bit to balance out what we needed in the capital, in the capital account. So federal gas tax, M S I, that's what we're using in the calendar year currently. And then under the grants, other capital, there's two little dashes and it says we were informed, were unlikely to be considered. In the original capital budget we gave you last week, there was the, the filter media replacement and the backwash pond replacement. We talked to the A M W W P, Alberta Transportation is who oversees it. They informed us that that probably wasn't, those weren't two projects that they would prioritize, given the amount of priorities to consider and that we shouldn't bank on that, those two being approved through that grant. So we've taken that out. We funded it with M S I, I think Hawken in the meantime?
Self-funded.
Oh, yeah, self-funded, that's right. So we put them through utility funding. We'll talk, we can talk about that a little bit more too, but I just wanted to show you that those came out of grants and that's going to move as we explore grants between now and mill rate too. For sure it is. We're just, we're just working on all that stuff.
So I understood those are things that we had to do.
Well, they are. The filter media is probably high up on those priorities. The, the backwash ponds is something Bart could speak to it a lot better than I could, by the way, but they were, they're reasonably high priorities for us, yes. The associated engineering report is coming out soon too, and one of their major recommendations is just getting that filter media changed as well. We just got that this week, we got the draft this week. So that's going to be coming forward as well. But we hope that we could use water wastewater grant, but, but we can't. It's not going to be a priority for now.
Commissioner Barnes, do you need more information from Bart regarding the back wash pond?
I just want to get it, I want to get it wrapped around my mind that, that that's something if for some reason we couldn't do it next year, is it?
Right.
Not mandatory that we get at it right now or can it be put off a bit, Bart?
Backwash ponds?
Yeah, well, both, we got the filter media and the backwash, both of those.
The filter media is, that's critical.
That's.
Our media is in a, it is needing to be replaced. And so I would say that's a priority one. Backwash ponds could be pushed off for a year.
Okay. All right. Thank you, that, that helps me. But as you said, that, that's self-funded, so we have some reserves to do that?
Well, we're using revenue from the utility side to fund it. I mean, it comes out of the general revenue.
Right.
Of course it does.
Ask a question, Commissioner Bengri.
But we do have some margin in the utility that can, that can fund it. That was the point of setting the rates where we have.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Bengri.
Jeff, in two, four, two, seven, sixty-two, sanitary sewer capital.
Let's see, wait, wait, let me get there.
Page seventeen.
Page one.
I know I am. And I apologize. Twenty twenty-one is three point three million dollars for wastewater treatment upgrades?
So that's that membrane upgrade that Bart presented on. So that's that membrane upgrade that Bart presented on
Okay.
A month ago, something like that? Six weeks ago, a month ago? Uh, we don't have, uh, that, that's an interest, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it because we're there.
What item number is it, please?
Two four two seven sixty-two.
One at a time.
Seventeen, page seventeen.
What page?
Seventeen.
Okay.
So that's one where we do not have the grants totally lined out for, but it's one that we've put essentially what you had in major utility capital reserves with the intention that we could get the other two-thirds through grant. But it's not secured yet, so we'll be talking about that more for sure. We think we have fifty cent dollars pretty lined up now, but the budget shows that we only need, that we need sixty-seven cent dollars, is what the budget's showing. Um, but we're, we're reasonably comfortable, I say that with, as reasonably comfortable as you can be with a grant like that, we're reasonably comfortable on fifty cent dollars, but we're striving for sixty-seven. And we've had that before with the outfall line, we got sixty-seven cent dollars on that, we did a federal, provincial, municipal, three-way split, uh, so we're seeking for that again. Uh, so let me just, as Counselor Bengry got so anxious, he threw me off my, uh...
I apologize, sir.
It's okay, I'm going to get over it pretty quick. Uh, so page fifteen is where we, we just finished fourteen, so page fifteen. Um, you saw this on the income side of the budget already, those first two lines under loan proceeds, we had some loan proceeds in the costs of those loan proceeds in the expense side, we took those out for now and we're not planning on them for the clubhouse, so we've taken them out of the, uh, the revenue side of the, the capital budget. And, uh, oh, so what we did, if you look at one nine four five eight oh, the last line, we added five hundred thousand dollars there. It doesn't, it doesn't affect the budget. When we took the loan out for the clubhouse, the question is how are you funding the other five hundred thousand? So we're putting it as a, um, a clubhouse fundraising. So it's third party, that it has to come in from a third party.
Oh, Counselor Brown?
I do have a question. Okay, so one nine five five nine two.
Yep.
So it's just in regards to, we've listed the resurfacing of tennis courts, so I see it's ended, we've got twenty twenty, now we're going into twenty twenty-one, and we've listed all of those things.
Yep.
I thought, I thought some of those things were stricken for now?
You are, you are correct.
Okay, so I'm just...
They're, they're about to be, potentially.
Okay.
So what we brought you is, this is balanced without considering how to fund the rec facility.
Any kind of...
But I, we're going to talk about those scenarios again, where that, most of that list of things is either reduced or deferred.
Okay, because I was like, we just talked about it.
Totally agree with you on that.
Okay.
But what we were trying to do is say, when we bring you the next budget, we can show you that this, this, and this changed from balanced to this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so it's good observation and I, I agree with you. Those will potentially be manipulated today.
Okay.
Uh, that's all on page fifteen, there's nothing on sixteen that changed. Um, on seventeen, again, Brandon's working on those later year capital pieces, so he's just re-looking at everything, so there's going to be a little movement in there, um, until we get this fully sorted out. So you can see we postponed one of the other projects until we do a previous one, when he reviewed another one that was in the infrastructure master plan, we saw that we don't need to do it on water, just on sewer, so the water piece came out. So that's the point of his exercise right now, is to go through all that. Um, and other than that, uh, there's nothing on the last page. So, any questions, any more questions we need to discuss on that? I don't, I don't interpret it to be the finished document for the year, obviously, but it now gives us a balanced benchmark to start manipulating major components of funding. Uh, because if you're going to look at accommodating things like the rec facility, you're, you're going to have to do that, like Counselor Brown said, some things got to come off of there in order to make that happen, so. It'll now be apparent what's impacted as we move forward. Okay? So the question is now, where do you want to go from here? I did prepare, and I just haven't given it to you yet, I did prepare, as per your instruction last meeting, uh, a new scenario, if you will, to come up with the million dollars, is it reasonable that we start to have that discussion? Sure. Yeah, if you would, please. I might have given my copy, no, I...
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
So what this scenario, your, so last meeting, we talked about a number of scenarios from using all of certain grants to cutting a number of things, to using diventures, you know, we, we kind of kicked around all kinds of scenarios, and we talked about the pros and cons of each of those approaches. What you asked, and I don't suggest this is the perfect fix either, and I, I have some concerns with it, but we're, we're further along than we were. You wanted to look at a combination of cancellations and deferrals of recreation capital, you wanted to look at using any, uh, associated remaining recreation reserves, you wanted to look at using MSI, and, and then entertain using unrelated reserves, so things that aren't recreation per se, but are in reserve accounts. So, um, what this is showing, and, and Counselor Brown, that the first six items here are kind of those things you were looking at is, what I, what I tried to present it as, if we cancel or defer the tennis court resurfacing, that frees up seventy-five thousand dollars from the budget you just looked at that's balanced.
Right.
Okay, so that's what that does. Same thing if we repair some irrigation, instead of replacing it, we'll spend five, it frees up ten, because we originally had a budget for fifteen. If we cancel and defer the reunion center playground, it frees up thirty, if we cancel and defer the Redford Todd lot, it frees up fifty. If we repair the worst spots on the stairs, we can free up forty. If we only do one quarter of bleacher replacement, we can free up thirty. So then what happens is, and again, this is why Hawken and I looked at, what do we think reserves look like at the end of twenty twenty, instead of what were they at the end of twenty nineteen? So if you do all those things, there should still be, and I know I have this to a precise dollar, because I was trying to balance this exactly, you should have approximately a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars left in the recreation reserve at the end of twenty twenty. So that's what that next number is. So we can free up cash in those first items, we should have a balance remaining at the end of the year. Now that certainly doesn't get us there. So the next line is our MSI. Um, on your capital sheet that I gave you, it shows that you will have a balance of roughly four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of MSI remaining at the end of twenty twenty. However, in order to balance the subsequent years, we knew we were going to have to use a little bit of that in the following year in twenty twenty-two, so we are comfortable, and I say that super relatively, but we're comfortable putting, saying that there is three hundred thousand dollars of MSI that could go towards us that will not impact, well, as much as we've had to pare it down to get it there, but it won't impact what's in the budget now, in future years. Then after that, in twenty twenty-one, you are budgeting to tax two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the recreation master plan, as we, as you had chosen to do a few years ago every year. So that money will technically be available in twenty twenty-one. So we burn up all of the balance in twenty twenty, you will tax in twenty twenty-one two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you have the ability, should you choose to, to use that in the year. The consequence of that is, is what you've done is pushed anything in the recreation master plan out yet another year, so then we have, we're behind a half a million dollars from where we were today, because we've had to, to use that money for two years, and in the third year, we've got a half a million dollar backlog. That, I'm just, just so you know, that's one of the things that happens when we do that. And then we were about sixty-two thousand dollars short after all those numbers, so I just went through and the little list below is, pulled some unrelated reserves. So for example, and I, this is actually quite an old reserve, but years ago, there was some money left over where the council today wanted to save it, so when our big cedar welcome signs on each end of town fail, that we have some money in the account to replace them, for example. Well, we're all going to wake up tomorrow morning if we don't have that money for those signs, I guess is how I looked at it. I get why it's there, and I think that that will be upon us, we're already kind of filling and foaming and painting and, they're cedar signs, right? They're subject to deterioration over time. But that was put away, that's one we could grab, there was, we have a, a balance in professional fees. This was a, actually an account you created as a council, um, when we have things like potential litigation or potential engineering that needs to be done outside of what we budgeted for a project that needs to be shovel-ready and those types of things. So I'm certainly, there's actually a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that account. So I was proposing we took some, that was my number, as you can see, it's the only non-round number, I was using it to balance to get to the exact number. Um, so we'll pull some of that potentially, if you choose to. We've been putting some money away a little bit, we don't have much, I think we only have twenty thousand dollars for a future recycling facility. This one, none of us know what the darn future of recycling looks like. That's the kicker, right? As far as we know, nobody's going to be doing it in a few years, that's a, that's a potential option, I just don't know. So we have other things we can look at, but I plugged that one in, economic development strategic plan, this stemmed from a number of years ago, where there was some money left over from a project that was, the council that they chose to leave it inactive. And then, uh, general planning, so we keep, I think it's only about ten thousand in this case, if, again, we need an engineer or an architect on something, or Brandon has his piece of equipment fail that we can't do the underground utilities, something like that. So I just grabbed from there, because I felt these were ones that you, you can work around, you know, we can, we can deal with it administratively. So all of those things together, uh, total a million dollars. Um, that's just one scenario.
So, thank you, Jeff, for that scenario. For whatever it's worth, I thought about that whole funding also, and that's obviously contingent on a polling of the population that we're going to do in December. And so, I just thought that maybe if you want to kind of pass it around, and I'll talk to it. See, Counselor, if you want to give this. And, uh, it's really outside the box kind of idea, for whatever it's worth. So, Judy, do you have, do you have one?
Uh, no.
Thanks. So, to me, the whole issue of the, the rec proposal is not to nix the proposal if the citizens want it, but that's a big if, but it's a timing, and a financing that's not going to affect future budgets. So I know it's, uh, not what some want to hear, but it's still something that I think we should bring forward. So the idea is that in two thousand twenty-one, we would have really hammered down the conceptual framework for the project, and that, really, we might not have that built this year, but in subsequent year, but hear me, is not to nix the project, is to find a solution to the problem. So to me, unless we do a timely and wise budgeting, short and long term, that will determine the support of the community and the success of this project, it's difficult to move forward. Right now, we have a lack of clarity, really, uh, long term as to the impact of even what's presented right now, and accountability and transparency needs to be there. So what I really thought, that this mo, this model, whichever we come with, should really come to a play beside at election time, if we know for sure that the will of a population through the polling, which will be statistically relevant at ninety percent accuracy, plus or minus five, and we know we have to poll two hundred and ninety households, if there is an indication that there is a desire for this facility, then I think a long-term view plan needs to be put, uh, in place. So, to me, in a polling, we need first of all to know if the community needs that facility, then we need to understand with, the community with full knowledge, do they support that idea? That means once I have all the figures, but do they support it without tax burden? And so the budget will need to reflect that, we'll have to figure out where to find the money, the same way as we're doing this exercise right now. And another question could be, the community with full knowledge supports the idea and is willing to pay a specific rec facility tax for the next five to ten years, or who knows what it is, administration could figure it out, and could be a variable, uh, amount on assessment of property, but not to exceed a specific ceiling. But it would require many things, first of all, the clubs, the entity, the organization need to pledge their support upfront, which we don't have right now, with written submission to council, even if in principle to start with, and with firm indication of financial support to follow, because the structure could offer them space required for their programs, it's a way to establish potential rental revenues. The, on the B, three Bs, is for nonprofit organization to start multi-year funding, uh, fundraising, establishing the lower threshold to be communicated to council. Right now, we have no idea what the pickleball, uh, organization is willing to, to have for, I heard three hundred thousand, I heard some figure like that, but we don't know it, it has not been communicated formally to us. And they should be putting, uh, their money in a trust account, or various trust accounts for the purpose of a rec facility, donation being charitable donations. And then we need to figure out donors and philanthropists to be approached for such project, if that is the will of the, the people in this town. It also will require obtaining written support in principle, uh, for now, with firm future financial commitment by the school board. We hear that maybe they're interested, maybe so, but we have no idea when they will earmark any money in their budgets, so that's an issue for us too at this time. Same thing with a county, we hear that they might be interested, but we have no idea if they want to contribute financially or in kind and at which level, but I think hundred thousand a year for three, four years is probably what we're looking at. So it also would require the town to pass a resolution to reserve monies every year, about two hundred thousand, here I see two hundred and sixty, for the next three years to boost the rec reserve for capital expenditure, but that doesn't come without tax increase, obviously, or we need to rework the, the budget in order to not have tax increases. And we need to absorb the annual increase in rec reserve by prudent budgeting for other capital project without losing sight of the obligation of council to fund necessary and essential capital expenditure to keep the town as a viable community. So we need to allow the utilities, public works, and electrical reserve to support first their present and potential future capital prioritized projects. And this does not mean that that project cannot be pushed in time, when necessary and when possible. We also need to allow annual, uh, annual prioritized list of rec priority to take place, as recommended by the rec board. They have some needs, they have some wants, let's work on the needs, and because when we push them, as we just heard, two years down the road is five hundred thousand dollars, we need to figure out where to find them the money to, to do those projects. And we need to seek and write grants for various capital projects to lessen the tax burden and, and free up monies. And also in the framework of the ICF, which is an important negotiation in the future, we need to, we need to seek to revisit the contribution toward the rec facilities, rec centers, spray park, et cetera, for which we have no, uh, commitment at this point. And it also would require a need for administration to determine estimated annual operational cost and see how to minimize that, this cost, cost by seeking operational sharing cost with all the clubs, organization, using the facilities, developing models of usage of the facility and projected revenue and expenses, and developing fee structures and membership fees. fees. It will also require determination of a timeline for shovel-ready project, that is, if the community is showing interest in that, and starting of construction time. The use of volunteer ware and if possible to minimize labor costs, but in a legal framework of insurance requirements. We surely don't want to be liable beyond what we can't afford. And use of in-house labor and machinery if aware and when possible, including county's contribution. Follow all proper bidding protocols, that's a must, and build all up to code, and that's another must, to not have sickening future surprises, we had enough of those, a waste of taxpayers' money. So this council with administration can work on all facets of the project, the three and five years capital expenditures, that's what we're doing. This should be completed by the mill rate season in early spring of, of 21. Once the result of the December 2020 polling are known, it's not binding, I know that, but a good way to fill the community, council could direct administration to develop a timely schedule of objectives towards timing of a shovel-ready project and report progress in a CEO report or at council meeting. My concern is that the present lack of unity around the table, the tension, the attitudes, and desire to be less than accountable or transparent at time, the mistrust towards administration and our collective and individual frustration at each meeting are all signs that the way we are tackling this is not in sync with ways that could achieve success. Think about it. At the onset, this project needs to be based on established support by the taxpayer community who voted us in to be the guardians of our mighty tax dollar. Even if they like the conceptual idea of a rec center, and maybe do, by the way, they need to tell us under which condition they could support its realization. When this is established, what I presented above could be a way forward. This are just my outside-the-box thinking. Thank you.
Can I respond to this?
Please, go ahead.
Uh, the Environment Ministry would be jealous of this thing. It's death by a thousand cuts, just like they do with the, with the pipelines in B.C. Delay, 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 delay. Everything you can think of, if you don't want it built, you can put a reason for why you're not to build it. That's why I see in this, in this letter. Reasons not to build it, and there's a million reasons why we should, and there's a million reasons we're not. That's just delaying it and delaying it and delaying. We, we were elected three, we're three years ago, and most of us, quite a few of us here were elected on the idea of getting a rec center here. Now, all of a sudden, we're to the point where we maybe could get something going, and then all of a sudden it gets chopped down, and it looks like five years down the road to get all this stuff done. It's just delayed, delay, delay, one, one thing after another.
Let me ask you a question, Counselor.
We are working on these things, Mayor.
Okay, let me ask you a question. You were elected with that item on your platform.
One of them.
Yes, okay, fair enough. Were you elected in increasing taxes by a, an unreasonable amount?
That's your, that's your belief, not mine. I don't think we're gonna, you'll see an unreasonable amount of taxes going up.
Over the year?
He presented the budget, he, he's shown us how we can get it without raising taxes, and then all of a sudden you throw this at us.
No, you know something? Let me tell you.
And then you, then you, then he accuses of being, not getting along, but half the reason we're not getting along is because this kind of stuff shows up all the time.
Well, I have not shown you a lot of stuff. I'm trying to give you my perspective of a different financing model to make it happen if the community wants it.
Yeah, I'll try and come up with it. It doesn't look like you want it to happen with that letter.
Not at all, Counselor, when I've wasted my time.
Can I?
Yes.
Um, I thought the last time we met, we put some things in place, getting blueprints, getting those things drafted up. Once we get that drafted, we can take that to a construction company, we can look at costs, we can do our survey to the community with some actual numbers. And then, when we get that back, if it's positive, negative, at least the community has some idea. And then from there, what I see happening is if, if it's a thumbs up, then we're gonna start looking at the million dollars and where we, where we're taking that from, how we're, how we're accomplishing that. And, and I, I don't, I don't feel like there's been a lot of, I mean, there's been some tense moments because we're talking about a lot of money and we're talking about different groups that wanting this and that, and that's, that's fine. That's all part of the process. But I, I kind of feel like we have a plan in place and we're following, fir, this is the first step, this is the second step, this is the third step. And then from there, once our community tells us how they feel, then we can go ahead and do that. So that's how I have seen it, so I don't.
Counselor, I do if you'd online me responding to that. I agree with it, and this is what I'm trying to say. We need to get things in place for the taxpayer to first of all tell us what they think about it. But what the problem is, is a timing issue, because the budget needs to be done by the end of January for sure. And so we're not sure that we're going to have all those answers. So that was an alternate scenario. Counselor Bengry.
Jeff, can you give me some ideas on, on, on this question? We have some major recreation facilities in our community right now. What does it roughly cost us a year to run our swimming pool?
Oh, Counselor, I didn't come prepared with my nets on those.
Just give me a rough figure.
I'm gonna take a couple wild swings at it. A pool, 110 is kind of what I, again, we just had a weird COVID year, so it threw my numbers way off, but I want to say about 110 and maybe just, is it 80-ish or so on the rink? It might be a touch low there. Any thoughts? Don't feel still here? No, never mind.
It's quite a bit higher than that.
Is that?
That's probably excluding wages. You're closer to.
I'm looking at net, no, I was thinking the net.
Oh, net?
Yeah.
Net, okay. So on the swimming pool, you're, you're about 120 to 130,000 deficit.
Okay.
And on the ice rink, uh, it's something similar. It's close to 100,000.
And on the spray park, we just opened up?
Yeah, we had long discussion about that a couple weeks ago. I mean, our, our bills to NMAX may be around 50, again, our net. Our actual net loss on that's probably the power bill, so I don't know.
Now, is there any, any plans to reduce the cost of that spray park operation?
Oh, yeah, we're putting in pressure reducers this winter, we're putting in, we'll, we'll have to crank down the water consumption, all that stuff, yeah.
Okay, now, the golf course is a major expenditure. We've, we had a COVID year, which drove golfers to golf course. What kind of money do we, uh, operational for the golf course?
You're budgeting 100,000 loss of the golf course.
Okay.
Counselor, can I ask you what your point is on all of this?
Yeah, I want to know where we're finding this money, uh, to operate these things other than using tax dollars, which we have had, had to use. We have to use tax dollars and it's residential taxes. We don't have any business taxes, you know, or commercial taxes in the, in the community. Well, we have some commercial taxes.
110%.
Very little. And so the operation of the facilities we have right now has also got to include the operations of a rec center. And if we look at where are we going to generate money for, for the rec center operational use, it's got to be at all the user pay that I look at to, to operate a rec center. And are these clubs and, and different users going to be able to afford the kind of money that could possibly be charged to them to pay for the operation of a rec center?
That's a question. Counselor Selk.
Thanks, Mayor. Jeff, can I just ask a couple questions of you, please? So on the first page, you have 1-42-401, domestic sewer billing and commercial sewer billing. So that amounts to about 990,922 in revenue. Is that correct? So on page eight is 2-42-501 all the way to 2-42-831, representative of all the expenses for the sewer treatment plant.
Yeah, all the 242s should be the sewer plant.
Okay, so not, not missing anything in there, are we?
I don't think so.
Because all of those expenses amount to 733,633. So you take the expenses from the revenue, and we got 257,289 in our jeans. So where's that money going?
That's what's making up the revenue side of your budget.
I know, but I'm just saying that we are making money off of that utility.
Oh, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. So if we were to think outside of the box, and I appreciate the mayor thinking outside of the box, supposing we took instead of the $1 million out of major capital that we were going to put into the sewer treatment plant, and allocate that towards the rec center. So there's the million dollars right there. Then we have to make up that million dollars somehow. My initial thought was we could do something very similar to what we did with the water intake line. And that's, our first approach should be to the blood tribe and suggest that you have a stake in this, just like you did with the water intake line. And perhaps your share of the necessary upgrades on the sewer treatment plant could reflect something like a half a million dollars. And that might be the first step forward in terms of coming up with some of the money that would offset what we would be taking out of major capital. The other aspect to this, I guess, argument is that we don't have the same provisions. If, and, you know, I, I get it, that there may not be any appetite on behalf of chief and council to enter into an agreement like that. I would say, well, you have a number of residents directly affected by the sewer treatment plant, and that's one of those facilities, one of those items, one of those things that we have that are definitely user pay. Because everybody that goes to the bathroom has to pay to use it. So I think it would behoove them to think very strongly about engaging in this whole concept of helping out with the wastewater treatment plant. And the other aspect of that is that if they're reluctant to engage in that, well, we don't have the same, if I understand correctly, the same agreement in place with them where our water rates go lockstep with whatever we get as residents of the town accords, then that's what the residents of Moses Lake get for their charges. We wouldn't have to maintain that same level of agreement with respect to the sewer treatment or the sewer rates. We could make a difference in terms of the amount that we charge for their sewer resources that they get from the town. So there are some options there in terms of financing this without having to raise taxes. And then we would end up debenturing part of this, which I know everybody hates the thought of debenturing something, but we've already debentured the sewer downfall line. If we were to add a reasonable amount onto that and debenture it out over time, it wouldn't change the rates significantly from what they currently are. Is, is that correct, Jeff? Because we're about to make some changes on that anyway. We're about to renegotiate to include the improvements we just made on the sewer downfall line, and something could be factored in there for the upgrades on the sewer treatment plant.
It would just be how long you turn it out, right? You can get the payments as long as you need by as long as you turn it out.
Counselor Selk, can I ask you a question, Dan?
Sure.
We enjoy those questions, don't we?
We love having this exchange.
Absolutely. Okay, so here's a little bit of, uh, trying to understand the thinking, okay?
I know it's a little jaded, Mayor.
Yeah. So here's where I'm trying to understand your scenario. If you have reserve to pay for a sewer plant, why not allocate the sewer plant reserves to the sewer plant? And then let's take a debenture for what you're trying to do, which is to have a rec center. Then it has a public hearing, let's hear the people, but at least we know that the debenture is for the rec center, and we're not sugarcoating the idea. That's a thought I have.
Let me just say that, um, about a month ago, we had a rude awakening with respect to our sewer treatment plant that kind of threw a wrench into all of our plans going forward. I'm of a mind that when you have a huge item like that that shows up in council, you lay the expenses at the feet of the one that's really creating the problem in your finances, and that's the sewer treatment plant. I know it's a bit of a stretch, Mayor, but just go with me on this, okay? The thing with, uh, debenturing and/or laying the expenses at the feet of the sewer treatment plant is because that's the fairest way of paying for a facility like that, because everyone's paying, it's user pay, everyone gets the chance to help out with that. And I will say this, that, yeah, the problem is, is that we have a number of facilities in town that are used by non-residents of the town, for lack of a better term, and they pay nothing to use it. The only way that we can recoup some of that money for all of our recreation use is through other utility costs, other utility revenue. Does that make sense?
Counselor Bengry, and then I would like to have a subsequent question for you, Dan.
Jeff, according to MGA, which is our bible, and to law, if we use capital reserves, we don't have to have a public plebiscite, right?
Uh, well, it's a bit different.
So I don't think you mean the word plebiscite. I don't mean to be presumptuous, but I don't think you mean plebiscite.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
There's no spending the council must have a plebiscite on. The only way is if someone forces your bylaw to plebiscite.
Okay.
So that's how it can happen. So you, you present a borrowing bylaw, there's a petition in the community that can force the borrowing bylaw to plebiscite. So that's an option, but there, there's nothing in the budget, for example, that I would say, hey, before you approve this, you have to go to plebiscite. But public hearing is required for any borrowing, but it is not required for the use of reserves. That is at your discretion. You taxed for it already, or utility rated for it, or taxed for it, or somehow you generated the revenue to create the reserve for some purpose. Our policy states that a resolution of council is required to change the purpose of a reserve, but that's a resolution of council at your table.
Okay, I'm going to use a term that my, my father had used, backdoor politics. If we use capital reserves for the building of a rec center or whatever, okay, we don't have to have a public hearing. But let's say one of our major utilities, and it's a what-if question, had a major breakdown and they had to have major repair, 1.1 million. We have to have a public hearing for a debenture, and so the mindset on that is this, hey, that is a required and needed facility, you bet, I'm in favor of it. So all of a sudden, you've got your debenture in place for doing something that you had capital reserves in place before you, you spent them on something else. You see where I'm coming from? You see where I'm coming from? And that's, that's, that's what I, you know, I can't wrap my head around this. And I want a rec center just as bad as anybody else. But I do not want to put myself, as a taxpayer, in a position where my taxes could immediately go up.
Right, Mayor.
Counselor Self.
So hypothetically, Counselor, you could spend the $1.1 million on the sewer treatment plant, out of capital, and the next day it could blow apart, and you still have to debenture.
Absolutely.
So what's the difference?
The difference is $1.1 million.
But you still have to debenture something.
Okay. If I don't mind, if you don't mind, I think I understand a little bit what he's trying to say, Counselor Ben-Gree, and tell me if I'm right or wrong on that one. What you're trying to say is that it's more palatable for the public to accept a debenture for public utilities rather than for rec centers that they don't know what's going to cost them. Is that what it is?
Or any other facility in regards to recreation or to needed and required infrastructure.
Okay. Counselor Self.
Okay. I guess the difference in my mind is that if we were to approach the Blood Tribe about contributing to a rec center, I think the answer would be a fairly, yeah, no. But if we're to approach the Blood Tribe with that we need to repair our sewer treatment plant, the answer's probably, we can look at that.
Okay, so
I need a break, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I need to make shoes for about two minutes.
Please, go ahead, Counselor. I have a question there for you, Counselor Self, or for administration for that matter, maybe more to administration. Jeff, are there as many customers for the sewer plant as there is for the water plant? And did they ever contribute anything to the capital expenditure? Do we even know? I do not know, it was so far
Talking Moses Lake?
Yeah.
Oh. I am not aware of any historic contribution on sanitary. We used to, and that might be because we used to have our lagoons on the reserve. So I don't know what our arrangement was then, but the lagoons used to be located just before the bridge down on the flat there. And so our sanitary infrastructure was on reserve for many, many years, until the 80s, I believe it was.
So we were the recipient, and we don't know if we contributed to that, or
But I couldn't speak to any financial
Yeah, I really don't know. It's so far been, you may know more than we do, Counselor, regarding that item. You were on council probably at that time.
I can talk, I can speak to, only to the water intake line.
Okay, so you don't know about the sewer?
No.
Yeah, so, I mean, so it's a hypothetical plan and great hopes, and my great concern is that maybe we would get
But the possibility exists.
Well, I don't say it doesn't.
In terms of asking for participation on a sewer treatment plant as opposed to a rec center, I think that that has more traction.
So, I understand your thinking. Thank you for clarifying the reason you're doing it this way. Counselor Ben-Gree.
We did, we did generate money from the reserve for the holding ponds down there. And I believe Louis Secretin can tell you when they were there.
Who's this?
More than anybody, Louis Secretin, because he dumped tractor into it. But that's neither here nor there. But anyway, historically, after this term, I've been on council 14 years, and we can't even get a meeting with chief and council. And furthermore, what about our county? You know, can anybody tell us any significant thing about our county?
For what purpose?
For input on facilities. We've got, we've got some money out of the county on several items.
Are you talking rec facility?
Well, on council, rec facility, or water treatment plant, or whatever. You know, we need to, we need to look at all those kinds of things because they're expanding their water, their water system.
Well, we have a study that is going to be made available pretty soon, I think. Am I correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't really know where we're going with that.
I agree with the mayor as far as the financing. We need to nail down the cost, what donations are going to be there. But we'll never be able to nail them down as long as we keep dragging this out for the next two or three years. We've got people now that are suggesting they would donate. If we decide that we're going to wait and wait and wait, you lose the incentive, you lose the impetus. If I could rebut Counselor Ben-Gree just a bit on the sewers and on the recreation facility. Yeah, sewers and water are essential. We have the best pace in Alberta to flush a toilet, I get that. But during the winter, people historically have tried to use the church gyms for indoor facilities. We have a long winter, I mean, we just had three feet of snow last week. There are a lot of people that have got nothing to do all winter long, and they're looking for someplace to go, take their kids. I believe mental health is very important, and I think rec facilities are important. And I understand there's a cost involved to it. But how do we get people to stay here and do things here if we have nothing for them to do?
But Counselor Court, my, my, my reply to that, are we Dr. Phil? I mean, there's responsibilities on parents and people like that to get their kids out and exercising, to get them out playing in the snow and tobogganing and stuff like that. I mean, we can't come up with all of the problems that COVID-19 has created for our families. Myself, I'm suffering from this COVID-19, I hate it. But I'm not going to go to the town and say, hey, Tom, you need to build me a gymnasium or something where I can, where I can run around the track 25 times and get this frustration out of me. You know, or go swimming on an indoor pool. I'd love to have an indoor pool. I would love it, I grew up in the swimming pool. And, but, like I said, how much responsibility is placed on our community, our taxpayers, to provide a release from COVID-19? And that's the one thing that we're looking at as a major's issue. I mean, in January last year, we never even heard of COVID-19. Never even thought about COVID-19. It's something that hit us, and it's impacted big time.
All right, Counselor Court, Counselor Brown, and then I think you have to start to make some decision.
No, I'd find let Counselor Brown talk, then.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, the budget that was presented, thank you. I appreciate the time that's gone into it. I like your scenario. It sounds like you pretty much took away with a lot of our ideas of last council. If the question comes to me, for those who don't know by now, I am a huge supporter of a rec facility. Am I a huge supporter of a drain and on taxpayer? Of course I'm not. I've got quite a few years, hopefully, knock on wood, ahead of me to pay taxes in this town. But am I trying to look for the future? Yes. Do I think we need to be Dr. Phil? No, I like Oprah better. But, anyway, the moral of the story is, I think the direction we're going between Madam Mayor, I appreciate your thoughts that you wrote, thank you for that. But I feel like, like Counselor Drew said from our last meeting, I felt like we are moving in the right direction. We did express to administration that we wanted to get the surveys out. So yes, we can hear from the residents, let's hear. If they say no, then we have our answer. If they say please, yes, great. But we can't do any of that unless we know costs. So I appreciate everybody sitting around this table, but I feel like there are, last, our last meeting, we put some great motions forward. We just need, we just need answers to come from those. We need to hear from our taxpayers, to hear what they want. Once we hear from that, then we will ever so sweetly negotiate back and forth across this table the needs and the direction that we see and need this to go forward. That's kind of how I feel. So I feel like, I felt like our last meeting, we had done that. And I feel like this is a great next step. I appreciate this, Minnie. I think it's been well.
Okay, so, I appreciate all those comments because it all seems to have a common, a common thing, thought, which is unless we have that building properly costed, unless we have that properly assessed as to the impact on taxes, unless we have a sense of yearly operational costs, it's difficult to move forward. So we're moving forward, we're moving figure forward, but it's very tentative because we don't have really the sense of where the taxpayer wants us to go. And I appreciate you realizing that unless we have a taxpayer input, yes, Counselor Court, we were voted in by people, but when you're talking about the facilities that represent one-third of our tax revenue in town, we're not talking peanuts. We're talking significant amount that's going to impact next year, the year after, and many subsequent years. Because we're going to have to push a lot of project further in time that in time will cost us more money because of inflation, and that we won't be able to fix that. So you're right, we elected to make decisions, but on a million dollar, we better have the public behind us. That's all what I really feel we need to remember. And it doesn't go well with some of you, I understand. It's my opinion. It's not the opinion of council, we only have one vote age.
Mayor, if I might, and I also appreciate the ongoing operating costs of the facility. My, I guess my thought on that would be, Jeff, we might make your job a little more challenging because we might ask you to be really creative in how you're going to staff this facility because you have public works, rec, water, wastewater, electricity, and admin, all operating in silos. There might have to be a whole bunch of cross-training and other things to free up people who maybe aren't doing that much in the wintertime, or maybe their focus is in a different area where they could be used someplace else. So maybe that'll be your challenge, and we'll leave that up to you. That's why we pay you the good bucks.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, Counselor. And I agree completely that if there's ways to do this, any way we can mitigate the operational costs is obviously the direction we have to go with it. There can't be a debate about that, I don't think. You had mentioned that to me a few days ago, and I've been thinking about that a bit. And I know Bart probably just twisted a little in his chair when you talked about guys not having anything to do in the winter. I know what his joke looks like because we share it online. One of the challenges, although it's certainly something we can work through, no question, but we're an interesting organization because we have disciplines that require certification in that discipline. So, you know, I must have a guy who's certified to operate a pool. I must have a guy who's certified to operate water. Public works has to be distribution trained, and so on, right? So there's these competencies that are specific to what they do for us day to day. That does not mean that a guy who has training in water, wastewater, can't also figure out how to drive a Zamboni. Doesn't mean that for a minute, and I agree with you. So, as this starts to come together as to who the major user stakeholders are, and so how long is it open a day, how, then that starts to become more clear, hopefully. Right now, it's still very, it's still very conceptual, we don't know yet, right? But hopefully that starts to come together, and then we'll start to put those operational models together. Mayor, if I can speak to that just a bit, I appreciate 100% where both you and Counselor Brown are coming from, that somehow we've got to determine those costs before the survey. But my concern is to get to that point, it's going to take us a while. So we're working, we've had just very early discussion, J.D., Jill and I, about how do we start to phrase public sentiment without having those? Is there an effective way to do it? So, because then we can do it sooner. You know, to have, to have design of a building that we can actually put out, if, if, and I don't want to necessarily open this Pandora's box, but if we're opening up every discipline for public tender, we're at least $70,000 away from those type of drawings, right? So what we're trying to do is find that middle ground where we can get some conceptual drawings that give a contractor or contractors, okay, this is the scale, the scope, based on my knowledge, based on what I know, I think I can give you a price somewhere in here. And then, once that all looks pretty good, then you pull the trigger on a $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 for a full design and go there. But we think we're going to try and find that middle ground where the public can look and see, oh, this is what it looks like. Well, that's something, that's good. Because right now, even that's a little bit, it's, well, it is conceptual, of course it is, that's where we are. So Brandon's got elevation designs close, I think Shem was working with him on some elevations. Brandon's been working with DA Building Systems to get some AutoCAD prints of a similar building that he can start to manipulate to see how things fit. So we're actually, Brandon's taking on a lot of that to keep it under budget as best we can. So we're hoping we hit that conceptual point, and then we're going to have to decide if it looks good enough that we pull the trigger on the full design. But I think we'd be in, I think we'd frustrate Counselor Court tremendously if we waited for 100% of the cost to be fully formalized before we went to the public. Because I think that's quite a ways down the road. So we're going to try and find that sweet spot.
Counselor Brown, Counselor Self.
Just a comment upon, about that one paragraph. I, I don't think we've had a lot of disunity. I think we have seven individuals around this table that all have their own opinions.
Fair enough.
And it's healthy, in my opinion, to have a discussion. We have to have those discussions. Maybe we don't agree at that particular time, but in time, and you brought it up at the last meeting, when we make, when we vote on something, we are in unity. We made a decision last week to go with these preliminary drawings, to come up with a thing, and I don't think this was a fair comment after that. So let's just leave it at that, let's move forward. And I think that it's important that we all have that opportunity to share our opinions and our viewpoints. Because if we don't have that, then what's the point of this whole exercise of talking about things and negotiating? We just have to have that.
I agree with you, Counselor. It's just, the vibes were so frustrating to me. And maybe you went home happy all those meetings, but I felt we were looking at each other as somewhat the enemy of the others.
I never felt that, ever.
I felt, I didn't feel too good.
Yeah, well, and I can appreciate that. I mean, I've gone home from lots of meetings not totally happy, but I raised my hand on a proposal, and I accepted that. And I moved forward with that, and there was no more discussion in my opinion on that item. And we made this proposal last week, we all put our hands up, it was unanimous. When I saw this, I was quite surprised, you know? I think we just need to move forward.
All right, maybe you didn't understand that I support what we did last time. And it's reflected in that, in my opinion. It's reflected in a sense that the polling has to be taken, that's what we said. The proper numbers need to be established so that the taxpayer knows something, and from there on, we build.
Absolutely, and that was the whole point.
So I don't disagree with what happened last week, I'm true to what I believe.
Well, I don't think there was mistrust of administration, I think we give them some direction. You know, I really feel that we did. I feel like all of our attitudes, we all bring that to the table. And it's a privilege that we have to discuss, and I don't think we can ever take that away. And once we come to a unanimous decision, we leave it there, and we move forward.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you, that's all, that's all I have to say.
Counselor.
Nope, Jeff. You know, that makes me uncomfortable, Mayor.
You'd have to leave your position.
Yeah, that's right. I'll take my job over yours. What I wanted to ask is, what, so I brought a scenario for you to consider, which was made up of about nine different ways that you could potentially come up with the one million. Counselor Self has also proposed something. What I need to know leaving this, and I do appreciate all the conversation, and I've told you all before not to get whatever about it, you should contend with this. I mean, you should respectfully contend with this. This is a difficult decision, and it's okay that you're not all on the same page. But I do need you to get on the same page with a couple of things, so I know what's next. And the question is, do you want us to implement this or a similar scenario that I presented to you to show you how that affects the budget down the road for next meeting? Do you want us to implement what Counselor Self had proposed that included some form of borrowing to mitigate the cost and show how that affects things? Because remember with borrowing, there's the Because remember with borrowing, there's the interest portion that goes into operational costs. That's one thing I would always caution with borrowing. And so we'd have to look, just look at how we manage it. How, what do you want a week from today that shows what 2020, 2, 3, 4, and 5 look like based on how you choose to fund this?
I think that's a good thing, that's my thoughts.
Okay, Counselor Brown, go ahead.
I think, I think that's great, because then we'll have a better idea.
Okay, so you want to put a motion forward?
But for which scenario, Counselor, is what I was asking.
Well, I think that we've got several things to look at here. Counselor Selk, I thought, brought up a great idea, you know.
But which, which one do you want administration to-
Well, I was looking at kind of a combination of all this stuff.
You want them to do two scenarios?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, would you support two scenarios?
Yes.
All right.
That's my proposal.
So Jeff, you have doubled your job. So, Counselor, Counselor Court?
I do not, I do not see a lot of weakness in scenario number six he's put here. Yes, it's going to delay a few things, but reserves over the next two or three years will pick up on that again. It's not like we're never going to do this again. Those reserves are generally year to year. So I really don't see a lot of weakness in scenario number six. That way, there's no tax increases.
Wow.
And we, and we remove some of the things that we can put off. There is no tax increases in there, we're just putting off things off.
Well, remember, we put, remember, we put 2% in tax increase last, last council meeting, right? So there is some tax increase.
Well, tax increases are going to happen, unfortunately, we've got to pay for our policing and everything else nowadays. We know that taxes are going to go up a little, our job is to keep it as minimal as we can. But when I look at scenario number six, there's no giant recreation tax coming out and jumping all over it to scare people to death. It's building this thing with basically what we've got without going outside. We understand that a large part of what's going to go in that building is going to be donated, and we've told them that our minimum is, this is all we're going to put into it. So I really don't see anything wrong with scenario six.
Okay, Counselor Selk.
Can I just ask Jeff a couple of questions?
Please go ahead.
Okay, Jeff, with your scenario number six, you have a reunion center playground. Can I just ask, that was in the rec master plan?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a playground that's just being refurbished a block from the reunion center, is there a problem with that playground?
But it's gone now.
Oh, no, the one in Purple Park.
Yes. So the equipment's changed.
Yeah, but it's been refurbished, and it's a block away.
It's brand new.
Why do you need two totlot playgrounds within a block of each other? That's just a question I'm asking.
You may not, you may not, again, it's just historically being replacing them all, and this is where it's been.
Okay, this uses of unrelated reserves, that figure there.
Yep.
In your, our last council package, you gave us basically an update on, you know, our finances, our statement, whatever. And in part of that, you had legislative services, that's us, isn't it?
Do you remember off the top of your head, was it all contained in legislative services on the balance sheet?
Wasn't it for the ICF, we had put money aside?
No, it's 150-
Council expenditures.
Council expenditures, for 152,700 and change, and thus far, we have only spent 74,000, and we're not going to spend all the rest of that by the end of the year. So you could take a big chunk of what we're going to roll over from our council expenses, because we follow the mayor's lead, and we're all tight-fisted.
Not tight-fisted, trust me, one being, one million dollars is not tight-fisted.
Oh, come on, maybe, you can, you can make that up. So that's a way of taking care of that, right?
If I could speak to that, not as specifically, but I'll speak more generally, because what you will find, we've been really fortunate over the years, and we know with the COVID year, budget was wacky, right? But we, there will be likely a surplus at the end of the year that you will be debating where that's being allocated to. Okay, but in order to build a budget, I, we've never built a budget on surplus because we don't know what it is until the audit, right? So to your point, that's one of the accounts that may contribute to that. What I don't know, and why I say I speak of it generally, is other accounts that may be over. I don't think we have too much in that direction, we're pretty good that way, like, we're pretty vigilant in making sure things don't go over to that degree especially. So we may be having a good discussion on surplus in April.
Can I just follow up with a question?
Please go ahead.
I'm just using that as an example, Jeff, but so you can see where you can whittle away. The other question I have is, now, in talking with Dr. Clark, he was supposed to extend an invitation to administration to come to their Pickleball Association meeting tomorrow night?
So I emailed him this morning, he texted me, and I can't be there, but I just said, what we're looking for is for you guys to try and put some parameters around the following.
Right.
And if you, I think I said, like, pull it up, but I just said something like, we're trying to get a feel for you as a user stakeholder, kind of how many hours annually you'd be looking for your purposes, and what that revenue might look like, either through a membership fee or a club payment, we don't really care necessarily, but what is the tolerance of the club to pay for the amount of hours you wish to have?
Did you also specify, we'd like you to get moving forward with letters of intent from some of your major donors so that the town has a better idea of what those donations will look like?
Yeah, I didn't speak to him about that at all, no, I didn't look at him.
Can you shoot him off a text and say, oh, and by the way, we want to do this, we want to know how many volunteer hours you can think might come from the Pickleball Association to go towards operations, et cetera, et cetera.
Could, could we, maybe in the same breath, understand what's the lower threshold of the contribution they're going to try to fund rates to it? If that's more, great, but what, what's the lower threshold? What is it? A third of the million? Is that half of that million? What is it?
We know that, you know, that one member of the Pickleball Association is that you that is on for 50 grand.
Yeah, I know.
So, but that's a fair question, Mayor, I think that should be asked, too.
You know, I mean, it's very difficult for administration to plug figures if they're always going to say, well, it could be 200, no, maybe it'll be zero, no, maybe, they've got to know.
That's why I've asked for the association to get letters of intent so that we have something to hang our hat on going forward.
And where are we with this school book, Counselor Brown?
I would love to answer that.
Please go ahead.
So I have a meeting with West, West Wind School Division on next Wednesday, they're letting me know the exact time, they're still working on their agenda, and I'm on call. So they're going to let me know what time, and I've got about 10, 15 minutes, and yeah.
What I'm wondering, is it possible to present them something a little bit that I say that, that, you know, I mean, if we're looking at $300,000 from them, which is what I gave Raymond, which I gave McGrath, and so, that's about the ballpark we're looking at. But if we were to make it more appealing to them as to, you know, it does not have to be paid all in one budget, but could be in three budgets, the ideas that are presented there. So that might be something they're more capable of doing if the project ever come to light, because at this point, we know we're putting a million, but we really don't know what truly that structure is like. There is that other element that concerns me, is that imagine that that million dollar really is truly 2, 2 million, or 2.3 million, or something of that sort. Who is going to make up the difference?
Can I answer?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so counsel has requested me, and I'm taking Counselor Selk as well, to do our pitch, in theory, on this building that we are looking into and finding out information on. But at the same time, I have done my homework, I have met with principals. I recently found out that West Wind School Division gave $300,000 to the town of McGrath for their pool.
Yeah, I know.
So, hmm, now they have a high school within our town of Cardston that doesn't have any green space, and we still do not have a formal written agreement with them for a joint use agreement. So I've got lots of things that I'm queued up. I've also met with principals from Lethbridge that have given me ideas on programming, because programming is the key. If West Wind School Division hears that we can have programming in our rec facility that they can use, be it across the street from their school, we're going to be that much better looking, and they're going to be more invested. So I have done my homework, I'm ready to go, and I will do my best, that's what I can tell you.
But, Chef, Counselor Selk.
You were queued up, and I want to be cautious. Peter and I came to full agreement on the joint use agreement this week to get signed, so you can take that off your, your list.
Target?
So it's just signatures now.
Is it? Okay, can I get a copy of that, please?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counselor Selk. Also, sorry, okay, you're not done?
And is the check in the mail?
Oh, that I don't know, he said he's ready to sign, so.
It matters, you can sign all you want, but unless the taxpayers get a check in the mail, okay.
I'll work on that.
Sorry, thank you.
But the agreement's settled.
Counselor Brown, thank you, but somebody may try to answer for me. If indeed the cost is far superior to 1 million dollars when we really do the proper due diligence, and, you know, I appreciate all the work Gabe Schaefer has done, don't get me wrong, but it's quite possible that the, the figures for a building of that size and all the expectation of quote of that site may not have been really taken in consideration properly. And looking at, at what Mr. Ennis sent us, thank you, by the way, for that interesting reference to harvest or something like that, the cost is far superior per square foot for such a facility of that size and requirements for it than what seemed to have been presented. So I do not understand exactly how Gabe came to his figure, I really don't know. Jeff?
I understand that, so we're doing some due diligence with Gabe on the capital, and once all the parties are settled on that number, it will require a resolution of council before anybody's putting a shovel in the ground. I think, I think that should satisfy council's concerns, right? So we'll meet with Mr. Schaefer or us, and we'll talk about maybe if there's differences, why, and when both parties are satisfied, I don't see a shovel going in the ground without a resolution of council.
Okay, thank you, because that's for me, the unknown that has me extremely unsettled. It's not the million dollars that has me unsettled. What has me unsettled is, is what is not spoken of.
Thanks, Mayor, I appreciate your concern. I think the simple answer is, once we have a couple of these pieces in place, like West Winds and the county, it's simple in terms of numbers, when we come up with this bottom-line figure, we just have to tell Pickleball Association, who's trying to drive the fundraising efforts, you got to come up with the rest, that's it, because that's what we need in order to build this place.
Okay, so if I hear you, you would then be of the opinion that unless that funding is perfectly in place, no shovel is in the ground?
We, let me just clarify that, the town's commitment would be a million bucks, that's it. Anything over and above that has to come from other funding sources in order to build it.
But we need to, before we push along and approve the whole project, we need to know the funding ahead of time.
Yes.
Okay, so if we agree on that, I can follow you on the idea.
High five. All good. I was two-sevenths of the way of figuring out what model to put in the budget for next week. I wouldn't mind knowing how the rest of you feel about that. I know where two of you are at, I just really want to make sure I come out of here with what you want in the budget next week. Is it scenario six or a combination thereof? We're quite settled there, so I'm going to push on you a little bit there.
Jeff, in the, in the hot seat, I'm going to put you, what kind of a timeframe are you looking at to get these figures together? Because that was, that was, what we're looking at is, is the costs associated with building this thing.
So the challenge is, Counselor, that it isn't going to be going, it's certainly not going to be a conventional costing, so we're not going to have the design to the point where I can put it out for, say, a large general contractor to bid on it, okay? But what I think the first step will be, and this is just me, is Brandon is currently working on that, and if there are some discrepancies that we can't quite reconcile, then we need to have that discussion collectively, right? If we're within a few dollars of each other, well, then there's a different level of comfort. But if we're a million and a half or 2 million dollars apart, we're obviously going to be having a pretty frank discussion. Now, to your question on the timing, it's a couple of more weeks anyway, probably, because we've got to try and get some more of this design work done and get some of that ready first.
Because I'm, I'm along with Counselor Court in the fact that we could drag this on forever, you know, and, and I think there's a time element that we need to look at.
Okay, so Counselor Selk, to your proposal, I understand how you would prefer to have the blood trial involved in all that, but since to me, it's a little bit of a far-fetched deal, I would say, if we have to borrow, let's do a debenture for the rec center, let's be upfront. The people will have already replied that they are interested in that facility, I hope. If that is what comes back, then we're pushing forward. But I would support a debenture that is for the rec center, if that's where it, it goes, because I know that you are seriously considering that for this coming budget. To me, it makes me jittery and nervous, but I still want to have the debenture for what it's meant to be, and let the people talk. It's 1 million dollar good grief.
The debenture's never been in my line of sight. We worked it around where we don't have to borrow to get it. I'm not in favor of a debenture to build it right now. I think we've got, the million dollars is what we've said we'll put into it.
But Counselor, if we have to-
If we can't make, if we can't raise enough money, then we don't build the building, simple as that.
But Counselor, if you want that million dollar, it has to come.
Right there.
Scenario six.
Scenario six, right there.
Done. So this one is, the first scenario, the other one was with the debenture. Okay, so how many of you are in favor of scenario six, maybe? Let me have a look. Okay, well, there you go.
So we'll prepare for next week, I'm speaking on behalf of Hocken now, we'll prepare for next week.
We'll.
A budget that incorporates this, because again, that, this, we'll do this, it's just going to show more of the consequences down the road. We think we can do this and balance the 2020 budget, I hope I'm not speaking as school air hocken, but that's how we established it, right? That was the point of it. But this will show now clearly that since today, next week, when we go over whatever color we choose, this is what changed because we implemented this scenario. So it's not a done deal, it just gives you something more to discuss when you see the consequences of it, right? So if that's acceptable, then we'll start to work on that tomorrow.
Good.
Can I ask one other thing, because it's very interesting? Irrespective of the debenture idea, and this is a little bit off-topic, but should we approach the blood trial about contribution to the sewer project proportionate to their use, either way?
I think so.
I think we should, if we don't, if we have no agreement, if there's no MOU, why don't we have one?
Yeah, I'm not aware, Bart, are you aware of one on the sanitary usage, only on water? Yeah, we don't have anything that I'm aware of on sanitary.
So that's rather interesting, there's no MOU, why don't we have one? And Counselor Selk, good on you for having picked that up.
They were a willing partner on the water, but we have some precedent there, so we at least ask.
A million dollars, that's what we need.
I think we need to ask, too, but just remember, there's an election coming up there, and so it's going to take a little while before they get into the mode of approving funding.
Well, we won't know very much until next year.
Yeah, it's going to be another few weeks, isn't it? The election is, what, two weeks away?
Yeah, but to before they get themselves, before they get themselves organized, I don't think anything in the new year, before the new year.
I was going to say, my guess is probably February, April, before they're going to make any decisions.
Not going to worry about the sewer at that point, trust me.
Put it out there, though.
But thank you for catching that up. I had no idea that there was no agreement on the sewer plan, none. Thank you. We learn every day, don't we? All right, so at this point, is that sufficient?
Yeah, how can- Yeah. Hawken was just asking, and I'm not, I'm not really sure. I'm just thinking through this. We're, his question was, what do we put in the upcoming budgets on the operating side to see?
That's what I'm wondering.
We're going to have to figure that out. We're going to have to make some assumptions, and if you're terribly offended by them in a week from now, then tell me. And then, we'll go from there, right? Because I just, we're going to have to make some assumptions. Simple as that.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I think we had a productive talk this time around, and it's rather interesting, the ideas that are generated.
I find this meeting a lot more productive than having this meeting during a council meeting at 9:00. Because we are fresh. We haven't got anything else on our minds.
Fresh, yeah.
We have budget, and I'm not wondering if this shouldn't be dedicated like this for future meetings.
So, Jeff, there is a question there, and maybe you can look at it. Is it possible, possibly, in December, I know we nixed one meeting, should we reintegrate one meeting to be just simply a budget meeting?
Well, I think what you could do is, let's see where we're at at CCW in December. And if you guys aren't settled yet, by all means, let's do it again. I'd have all our meetings at 1:00. It's great for me. But.
I have no problem with the one I have.
I do think that, I think you need to see how settled you are in December CCW. And if you don't feel comfortable going into that last meeting of the year, absolutely, we should do it again. We should hold up as long as we need to, that you're comfortable at the end of December, for sure.
Thank you very much. And to all of you in attendance, thank you very much also. You can see, there's a lot of questions we still don't have, but there's the idea of a project with a lot of unknown, but a desire to have a budget, which is tough. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to chat with you.
Sure. I've got a 3:00 meeting, so I got.